...七月二十七日，二〇一三，Long Beach Community College Board of Trustees. If everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask trustee Roberto Arango to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me at the flag of our country and have the use of me to remember that we have men and women in all hearts waiting to protect our freedoms. Ready to begin?
The Pledge of Allegiance is provided by the United States of America and to the recall of it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, you could please call role.
President Kellogg?
Here.
Member Bowen?
Here.
Member Clark?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
Member Yoranga?
Here.
Student trustee Denon?
Here.
Thank you. There is no items report out of the closed session. Approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes of our July twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen retreat and approval of the minutes of our July twenty-third regular meeting. I entertain a motion to approve. There's a motion on the sec-- on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Point of correction, we have individual--
Motion by Clark, second by Bowen, trustee Arango.
We have to do it a separate motions, not as one. First for the retreat and then another motion for the retreat.
The motions will reflect first one on the retreat, there again, motion by Clark, second by Bowen, all those, are there any corrections to that?
No.
Minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Corrections to the minutes?
To the, of the retreat. I'm glad I asked.
This is the, to the retreat, no.
Correct. Just the retreat.
No.
He doesn't have any corrections for those minutes, it's the next ones.
The next one, okay.
In other words, yes, I don't.
So there is a motion, a second on the floor for the July twenty-third retreat. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries now. There is a motion by trustee Clark, second by trustee Bowen, on the approval of the minutes for the July twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen regular meeting, trustee Otto.
Yeah, in, under the superintendent president's report, it indicates that the estimate for the recall election would be six thousand to seven thousand dollars, it's actually six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, the minutes will reflect that.
Duly noted.
Duly noted. There is a motion, a second on the floor with that correction, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, we have none, special announcements, presentations, Chair recognizes Superintendent President Oakley.
Yes, thank you, Board President Kellogg. First of all, I do have an introduction, there's a person sitting in Phyllis's seat who I'd like to introduce and give her a chance to introduce herself, since our Academic Senate President Phyllis Adias cannot be here this evening, Dana, the Vice President of the Senate is filling in, so, do you want to say hello Dana?
Hello.
We do have one retiree that we'd like to recognize, and I don't believe is here, Mr. Thomas Jarvey is not here, but I'd like to recognize him anyway. Thomas has served Long Beach City College for thirty-one years as a grounds maintenance worker, groundskeeper. He's done a superb job for many, many years, keeping this, keeping our campuses looking great, so I want to recognize him on his retirement, wish him the very best in his retirement, and again, thank him for all his years of service, so if everyone could join me in a round of applause for Thomas Jarvey, I appreciate it. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ordering the agenda, is there any changes on the agenda? I do not believe there is any. Seeing none. We're then going to go to the public comment on, on agenda items, and we have one speaker for agenda item only, speaking on item one point four, Lynn Shaw, Lynn? And one point four, for people is the, one point four is the approval of board goals for the upcoming year.
Hello, I'm Lynn Shaw, the President of the Community College Association, which is the full-time faculty union. Last year was a very tough year for our college, we began with a less, a layoff list of thirty-two faculty and nineteen programs or areas slated for discontinuance. In the end, eleven programs were discontinued and twelve people were laid off and nineteen people retired last year. All the layoffs were from career technical education programs, and I noticed that your board goal number two is to support career technical education workforce development and economic development agendas. So I ask you, where is the support for career technical education? Two of the specific items on the goal speak to small business, and one is to organize an economic development summit, so I ask you again, where is the support for career technical education programs? And what I'm talking about is students and teachers in classrooms, state-of-the-art industry standard equipment for our career technical education labs, resources for our career technical education programs that are left on campus. If we want to prepare our students for high-wage, high-skill jobs, and I know that is what faculty want, classes, programs, and departments need to be supported. I have come before you many times to speak of the low morale, and while this is still true, after multiple discussions this summer with faculty, I know that we are angry at the lack of respect and we are mad at the lack of support by our deans and other administrators, and there is, I believe, a deep distrust of the district. Faculty are here because of our students, our working conditions are the learning conditions of students. We need to do something to shift the culture and respect, engage, and empower our faculty. Thank you.
Thank you. When we get to the comments at the end, President Oakley or Vice President Bynum, could you just answer at least about that question about with, what our vocational programs, where we are today? I don't want to respond at that point in time, it'd be appropriate. Thank you. No other speakers at this time. We're moving on to the Board of Trustees, item one point one. This is an informational item. President Oakley, is there anyone, do we need a staff report on this?
No, this is just, we've made some adjustments to the regulation regarding the board liaisons, and those board liaisons will no longer exist, we've just identified those positions that need to be appointed by, by the board, the board chair, to try and simplify the regulation.
And this is also same with truth with item one point two?
Correct.
All right. And this was the item for the members of the, the board, this is what, in the past, where the, the chair has appointed trustees to certain areas, and it really didn't seem to be beneficial to anyone at the time, so that's why these items are on there, but those are information only, that is why that you're not seeing the chair appoint people in, into different areas. So we'll move on then to item one point three. This is on the Audit Committee, this is one item that we do have to publicly for an appointment. It is, in past, it's been the, the chair of the board, myself in this case, and appointment, and so I've appointed trustee Otto, again, to the, to the Audit Committee, who will review it before it comes to the full board. So could I entertain a motion to approve trustee Otto to the Audit Committee, please?
Move to appoint trustee Otto.
Motion by trustee Arango, second by trustee Clark, on the appointment of trustee Otto
to the Audit Committee. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item one point four, the approval of board goals for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, again, this is an action item. Could I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Clark, second by--
Second.
--trustee Arango. Any questions, comments on this one? Yes, student trustee.
Yes, thank you. I just have a question regarding the vocational programs, I have noticed that on our webpage, we have some classes offered for automotive and some of the, actually, courses that were discontinued, and I know that we are no longer giving certificates to these classes, I just want some clarification, because we do, we still have offer, some classes offered, but we are not giving certificates for those classes, or like, I would like some clarification of how is this working?
President Oakley? If you'd like me to respond, Board President Kellogg, there are a number of courses that are being taught as part of the teach-out for the discontinued programs. As we've committed to previously, we said that we would continue to put courses on the schedule so, to allow students to finish their certificate or degree requirements if they were already in the program, so that's what those classes are for. We've identified students who still need a class to finish in a particular area that was discontinued, and so upon completion of their certificate or degree requirements, they will still be granted a certificate or degree, but we are not teaching, we are not accepting new students into any of the programs, because those have been discontinued. So what you're seeing now is that, what we call the teach-out of those programs that were discontinued. Now, we are offering courses, such as courses like a welding course and other courses as part of other programs or certificate programs, those will continue to be taught, but there is no longer a certificate or degree in the programs that were discontinued.
Other questions from the board?
Just one quick, I noticed that in our, under number two, support the career technical education workforce development and economic development agendas, we indicated that we're organizing a local economic development summit. When do we anticipate that?
I will allow Executive Vice President Bynum to update you.
Yes, trustee Otto, we've got that conference plan for probably mid-November, we'll be, we're going to be putting together a committee from the community to be able to help us. Kaufman Foundation has offered to support and sponsor that conference for us as well, and so that'll be an opportunity for us to be able to hi, highlight and showcase some of our business development programs.
Yeah, I'd be interested in working with that committee.
Be happy to have you.
Thanks.
Very good. No other questions on this item? There is a motion, a second, to approve the board goals, all those--
Board President Kellogg, and it's certainly your prerogative, but if you'd like, I can comment on some of the CTE, since we're talking about the CTE goal, if you'd like me to comment on what we're doing now, or just wait--
You know, it can be, go ahead now, because I, that's why I wanted to, we've heard so many times when people say these things, and the comment I've been telling people, if you want to take a welding course, take a welding course, you just can't get a certificate anymore, so with that lead-in, absolutely, you'd like to respond--
Well, and I appreciate Dr. Shaw's comments, as much as I may disagree with them, and I know she and I have spoken many times about what we're doing in the CTE area, and I think she, she's got a pretty good insight of the different things that we're putting into motion in the CTE programs. We just hired two faculty members, one of which is a CTE faculty, to launch, help us really get off the ground, the cybersecurity program, so we're excited about that, we're going to be hiring a number of faculty over the next two years, and we're going to make a concerted effort to ensure that the programs that need career technical education faculty receive some of the highest priority. We're also continuing to work with the CTE area to determine how we utilize the assets that are still there to create new programs, I know Dr. Shaw is very familiar with what we're doing in that regard. We're looking at expanding the electrical program, which she is a faculty member of, we're making plans to move it to the Pacific Coast Campus, expand it, create a really robust solar program, and there's a number of things that, that we're doing to stay in line with the board's goals. This college is committed to career technical education, I think at some point later in the academic year, if the board, if, if the board wants, we can come back with a much fuller report on the different initiatives that we're pursuing to ensure that we continue to move forward, providing our students the very best career technical education possible.
Thank you. There is motion, a second, on this item, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We're now to the consent calendar, it's items two, three, and four, are there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Clark. Any questions, comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. We're now to the Academic Senate, no items? Thank you. The Superintendent President, no items?
We, I have an item, but it'll be, it'll come under Reports and Communications.
Okay, thank you. Academic Affairs, no items? All right. Student Support, there are no items, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Administrative Services? I don't know if I should have recognized the Presidents and Superintendent first, or just swing back over to the Vice President, so Emery?
It's an action item, so we would need to get a motion, and then we can turn it over to Vice President Gable to--
All right, before we turn it over to Vice President Gable, could I entertain a motion?
Move to accept the report.
Motion by trustee Arango, second by trustee Clark. At this time, Vice President Gable, report, please.
Yes, what you have in your agenda packets is our fourth quarterly report that we're required to submit to the California Community College Chancellor's Office, so this is known as the CCFS three-eleven-Q, and it reflects our activity for the prior four academic years, and so in the very last column on the right, that's for our twelve-thirteen fiscal year, and this is as of quarter ended June thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen. These are our projected ending balances, and I say projected just because they have not been audited yet, we will be undergoing our annual financial audit beginning in October, and that will be brought back to the board in either December or January timeframe. And again, this is also only on our unrestricted journal fund, so if you see there under line item E, which is the fund balance, we ended the fiscal year with a fund balance of seventeen million, one hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. The next section reports our annual FTES, and so we ended the fiscal year generating nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two FTES. However, we are going to be amending our final three-twenty report due to some things that just recently came to our inform, came to us, and so that number will likely go down slightly, we're not sure how much yet, we're still working on that, so we'll bring that back to you when we know. The next section, section three, is reporting on our cash balance. As you can see there, in both ten-eleven and eleven-twelve, we had negative cash balances at June thirtieth. This year, we actually ended June thirtieth with five point eight million dollars in cash, but that was only because we received our education protection account, what we call our EPA funds, on June thirtieth, so we received fifteen million dollars on June thirtieth, had we not received it, then we would have been in a negative cats, cash situation of about ten million dollars. So I think, as you've heard me say throughout the last few years, that cash flow is a problem for us, and we do borrow money because of it, and thankfully, we had borrowed money, so we were able to sustain our cash and make all of our bills on a timely basis. This upcoming year, I think cash flow will still be a problem, it won't be as much of a problem, but it is still a concern until things turn around entirely. So that's really the end of the report, I'll go into more details at our next board meeting when we're looking at our adopted budget, and at that point in time, we'll go through the differences between the adopted budget and where we ended the year in twelve-thirteen, unless you have any questions.
Are there questions from the members of the board for Vice President Gable? None? All right, thank you very much. There are a motion, a second on the floor to approve this item. No other questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Pacific Coast Campus, there is no item on that, correct? The College Advancement and Economic Development, no, no items. We're now to Reports and Communications, Academic Senate, President?
No reports.
No reports, thank you. Superintendent President, report.
Yes, thank you, Board President Kellogg, I'm going to call on a few people to give some reports and update that the board has asked me for in the past, and then I will make a few comments at the end. So to begin, let me ask Mark Taylor to come on up, I'd like him to give a report on college communications, this is an area that the board had questions and comments on at the board retreat, and I asked Mark to put together a report on where we're at, some of the things that we're doing to ensure that the board is fully informed of the efforts that we're making to communicate with, with the community. So with that, turn it over to Mark.
Thank you Superintendent President. Board President Kellogg, members of the Board of Trustees, my pleasure to be here with you this evening. As President Oakley said, he asked me to provide a brief update on behalf of him and Executive Vice President Bynum, just on some of the college-wide communications efforts that were going on, as he said, because that was a major topic of discussion on our board. So I want to focus on three key areas tonight, I will try and keep my remarks brief for you, but the first area is press and media relations, enrollment marketing, and then media outreach newsletters. First, I just want to talk a little bit about press and media relations. The Communication and College Advancement Office strives to showcase Long Beach City College students, faculty, and staff and media stories, our commencement, the eighty-fifth anniversary, rededication of the A Building, a truck driver training program, our partnership with the Harvard Truckers Training Association, all of those stories have received significant press attention in the last, in the last couple of months, as long, as well as the passing of a former faculty member, Ray Rodriguez, which, that story was picked up in newspapers really across, really across the country, had incredible impact, as we know, as Board President Yoranga knows, and Academic Senate President Phyllis Adias really knows, and so that, you know, a story like that really was, was picked up literally all across, really all across the country. Our office is also working very hard to keep members of the board better informed about our efforts to earn press coverage and share copies of the stories which feature Long Beach City College. If you'd look at your screens quickly, I'd like to show you just a couple tools that are available to everybody, but I particularly want to make sure that you're aware of them. On the communications page, which is my department's homepage, there's a list of all the recent media stories that are here, so that you can click on them, and, you know, they'll take you directly to them, so they're catalogued here, sorry, we have a little slow connection, but all of the stories that are here are available and ready for you to take a look at, as well as press releases, so copies of all the press releases that our office puts out are also listed here, so that you can, you can keep track of them. We're also making an effort to make sure that you receive copies of the press releases and stories as, as they're coming. In addition, we've, we purchased a new media monitoring service called Cision, which will track all the stories, while we all bemoan sort of the changing nature of our media landscape, meaning paper, you know, is changing a lot, one of the, one of the positive things that happens is the story that's written here in Long Beach can be really picked up all across the country and broadcast all over, but it's hard for us to track all those things. So Cision allows us to actually pulls all the stories and provides us the report of what's picked up both in print and online news services, and aggregates that into a report, and also assigns a dollar value to those stories, so it's a way for us to sort of measure the impact that our efforts have done. I gave you a sample of one report, the first one that was done in June, and in June, we captured fifty-eight stories, and the total value for those stories was about fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. We had a good month in July, so good in fact that the report was seventy-five pages long, so I didn't kill all the trees to give you copies of them, but in, in July, we had a hundred and ninety-five stories tracked, it was had, it was had a value in excess of six thousand dollars. So it's just one of the ways that I, we'll, we'll begin reporting back to you on the return on the investment that we're making in the press, and I want to, obviously, we'll continue to monitor this and bring it forward, but I did want to let you know that we're making a real effort to make sure both you're in the loop on that, and we're tracking that and returning, returning to you. I want to thank Ruthie Ratanasflora, who's been in our office for the last six months and really leading, leading this effort, she's done an amazing job, I just want to thank her and recognize her for her efforts. Fortunately, we're going to lose her services here shortly, but we have a new, new person coming onto the staff in a couple weeks, who I'm sure will, will continue to build on the foundation that Ruthie, Ruthie has laid, so I just wanted to thank her personally on behalf of myself and the college for all the hard work that she's done over the last few months she's been with us. So transitioning now to my second topic, enrollment marketing, our office has worked very hard to help the college meet its enrollment targets for the coming year, working in close collaboration with academic, students, and information technology services, we've done an extensive outreach and communication campaign, which includes several different areas. One of the new areas we've been able to deploy this year to, to support enrollment is direct communication with current and former students. The board was, a year and a half ago, we rolled out the Blackboard Communication Tool, Blackboard Connect, we were able to send thirty thousand messages directly to students who are eligible to enroll, just with reminders and instructions to help them be able to enroll in classes, also using extensive social media networks, we have nearly fifteen thousand followers on our Facebook page, we did significant outreach through paid Facebook advertising, which also seems to have been very effective, we did local advertisements in the papers, hopefully you had a chance to see them, just to sort of remind folks in the local community that we're here and that community, and that registration is open. Finally, we worked very hard to make sure that it was easy for students and others to access that from our homepage. We'll continue these efforts moving forward with late start classes that were expected to come on the schedule here shortly, and as well in support of spring. One of the particular areas that we're going to focus on moving forward is our CTE programs, we want to make sure that students are aware that we still have a significant number of CTE programs, we're working closely with Vice President Brock and associate, and our associate Dean Tom Coe, and faculty in the area to make those, to make sure those programs are available and marketed to students. One of the great tools that we now have as a system is the Salary Surfer tool that the Chancellor's Office puts together, which shows real-time information about the value that students gain from completing those degrees with pre- and post-earnings, so being able to highlight those, highlight the, the real return on investment students receive through our CTE programs here at Long Beach City College, be critical. We also just received, received word in the last week that our Fire Science Program is ranked number twenty-five in the nation, one of the top programs for return on investment. So again, we'll make sure that we're, we're highlighting these things, especially in our CTE areas, which is where, some of the places where we actually do have room for additional enrollment. Finally, the board talks, talked a lot about community outreach, and so I wanted to let you know that we've added two new, two new community newsletters, the first one, again, it's on your screen here, news, an online newsletter around the bond update, and as well as sort of what we're calling What's New at LBCC, where we focus on some of our students' success stories around commencement and our bond stories. These, if, you should, you should receive all of these as they come out, feel free to forward them to anyone you would like to, and encourage folks to sign up, folks can opt into these newsletters, we have several thousand subscribers already, we'll be working to build this, build these lists going forward, so that we can make sure that we're sharing our positive, our positive stories and good news with as many people in the community as we possibly can. I also wanted to let you know that, that-- I also wanted to let you know that, based on, based on your, on your feedback, we're developing a new community newsletter that we'll be mailing to households in the district. As you know, two or three years ago, it was probably actually three or four years ago now, we discontinued the practice of mailing schedules to every, every household in the district because of the expense and just because we wondered about the, well, primarily because of the expense. So we're looking at a way to reconnect with, with our district stakeholders, so we're looking at doing a mail community college district newsletter, so we'll update our residents on important happenings, curricular and otherwise, on the campus, as well as annual changes for the, for the bond, for the bond program. So I just wanted to obviously stress that effective communication outreach is a clear board goal. My office, my staff are working hard to deliver on that for you. So with that, I'll end my formal report, but be happy to take any additional questions that you have.
Questions? Members of the board? I have to tell you, it's, I get almost daily, it seems. Today was the one with King Alexander from Louisiana, who is touting down in the great state of Louisiana, a program called Promise Pathways, Long Beach Promise.
Long Beach Promise.
And he's exactly the program we already have here, and it shows you how that program is being viewed.
We'll send, we'll charge them for the use of our name.
It really is, Mark, we appreciate it, because there's a lot of good information that to get out there, and I noticed that one, I think it was today, about how King Alexander is trying to promote the programs that he was involved with here in Long Beach. So I'm very pleased. It's been great information that you've been sending to us and everyone else. Members of the board? Superintendent Oakley?
Very impressive.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Mark. The next item I want to have a report, to be able to report on to you, is the board just wanted to be kept up to date on where we're at with the teach-out of the programs that were impacted by program discontinuance. And I'd like to have Dr. Brock just spend a few minutes bringing the board up to speed on where we're at with the courses that we've put on the class schedule.
Thank you. I thought I would just review a few of the things that happened chronologically so that you know where we've been and where we're going. The college currently maintains 38 CTE programs, which include 59 areas of emphasis, and we have some yellow sheets of paper that the board has and that are available to the audience, which lists the programs that we currently still have. There are 41 AA degrees, 18 AS degrees, and 59 certificates that are currently on file with the Chancellor's Office. Just some comments about the discontinued programs. Some of the courses from the programs will continue to be available in the coming semester because they are electives in other disciplines and majors. These examples would include carpentry, welding, and photography. In the case of fall classes, 13 classes were scheduled to assist students in completing requirements for degrees and certificates. In the ca, in all cases, laid off full-time faculty and seniority order were offered the classes now in the schedule first. If they refused the assignment, then we moved down the seniority list until exhausted, and then brought in part-time faculty to continue the teach-out. In the case of classified employees, seniority was used to fill the assignments still needed to assist the existing programs. In the spring and summer, students were given information on the following: course substitutions available, course articulation available, i.e. attending another college, and reverse transferring the credits back to Long Beach City College to get a certificate, enrolling in summer and fall classes, and transferring to another institution that has the program. Summer teach-out included 39 sections of classes. The enrollment was less than expected. Some students elected not to enroll in the classes, even though they had been identified as needing the classes. That said, a number of students did finish their coursework. Aviation maintenance awarded 90 certificates from January 2013 to the present. 61 FAA airframe and power plant certificates, and 29 airframe-only certificates were awarded. The remainder of the students in that program have been referred to Orange Coast College or to Trade Tech by the airport to complete their program. No classes in aviation maintenance are scheduled for the fall semester. All classes scheduled for fall semester of part of teach-out are fully enrolled. An analysis of enrollment will occur, and additional classes may be planned for spring if needed. It is not anticipated that additional classes will be needed for the following fall. There has been no request for real estate classes. The Division will see if any requests materialize through the first couple of weeks of school. No real estate classes are currently scheduled for the fall semester. Students in commercial music recording engineer and commercial music recording producer have been directed to course substitution since commercial music is still available at the college. Students in photography can get the classes they need for their visual arts major in the art department. The architecture department is working on new classes, which will include the lead green design in interior space. As we get further into the new school year, new plans for the CTE area will begin to surface. As the President indicated, electrical will be moving to the PCC campus and perhaps other programs as well. After fall semester, we'll be down to a handful of students who were identified in the original cohort as needing one to two classes to complete a degree or certificate. Staff is working hard to make the transition for students as painless as possible while they finish coursework and perhaps change their emphasis of study. That's my report.
Any questions of the board for Dr. Brock? As the board has requested, we will continue to keep you up to date on where we're at. We've made a full commitment to our students, and I think Dr. Brock's report goes a long way showing that her division is following through on that commitment. I also want to thank, I know she's not here, Philis Arias, who has been working with me on the concerns raised by the Academic Senate regarding the teach-out. So I want to thank her for continuing to help monitor the situation on behalf of the faculty to ensure that the students get the classes they need, and for all her help in ensuring that we're able to get the faculty that we need and put on those classes for our students.
Just a quick question about that. I thought that was an excellent report and gave me a lot of information that I had been wondering about. I'd anecdotally been hearing that the teach-outs were going pretty well. Do we have students that are complaining about inability to get classes, or that there are problems? I mean, we usually get them at the meetings if that happens. We haven't made any?
Actually, not. I think we're meeting with them constantly and giving them information, and the fall semester has been relatively smooth in rolling out the programs and continuing to grow the enrollment in the current CTE programs that we have.
Okay, great, thanks.
Now, I just have, just a few brief updates. First of all, I want to thank everyone who participated in College Day. We kicked off the academic year in fine Hawaiian fashion, and I want to thank the College Day Planning Committee for doing a fine job of planning the event, bringing everybody together, and thank the leadership of all of the employee groups for encouraging faculty and staff to come out and participate. I think it was a really nice opening to the academic year, so thank you for your attendance, and thank you to the, to the board for participating as well. We started the academic year on Monday. We started the fall semester, and as usual, it was quite a busy last couple of days. But I want to thank the faculty, the department chairs, the deans, for working really hard to ensure that our students get the classes they need, get into the classes, and are directed along the path to success from day one. So thank you for what appears to be another successful start to the 86th academic year here at Long Beach City College. Finally, I want to thank a couple of individuals who worked very hard over the summer in their leadership. First of all, Part-Time Faculty Association, Union President Karen Roberts and her team helped to ensure that CHI ratified the tentative agreement that we agreed to back at the end of spring, so thank you, Karen. And also, we reached a tentative agreement over the summer with CCA over language primarily surrounding the department chairs, and that was successfully ratified, so thank you, Dr. Shaw and her team. That concludes the current round negotiations, and obviously, we'll be back to the table shortly to continue to have discussions with our employee groups. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. No questions from the board members on that? None? Thank you. Student trustee, report.
Thank you. So good afternoon, members of the board, students and citizens. So I will, I would like to start by congratulating the President of the Board, Jeff Kellogg, and the Vice President, Thomas Clark, for the elections of your new positions, since I did not have the opportunity last time. And I am looking forward and working with you for the best of our students and the Also, I would like to welcome the students to this new coming academic fall 2013. I really wish the best for everybody. All right. During the past month, I had been part of several activities that have helped me to grow on my leadership. The first one was a conference in New York with the Roosevelt Institute, where I got the opportunity to attend two leadership workshops and to get initiated in the policymaking process. This was also an amazing opportunity to network with other student leaders on campus throughout the nation. I got this opportunity thanks to some friends I have, and they invited me to come to this conference, and I was representing their Long Beach City College. Also, I am working with the Civic Engagement Club here on campus, so hopefully we'll be having a Roosevelt chapter, which will allow us to get connected to more campuses. This is, we are still working on that. There's no, nothing yet really formed. Also, I attend to the trustee conference that was by the Community College League of California. This also taught me a lot of my role as a student trustee. During the conference, I get to meet students, student trustees of other community colleges in California, and to become more knowledgeable and influential in education policymaker. During the conference, we elect the CCT Board of Directors' student member, Simon Freiser, and also, we elect the leaders of CAST. Eric Vorsat was elected as president. I would like to extend to this board that the California Community College Association of Student Trustees has, during the meeting, has strongly opposed to Assembly Bill 955, and we are united advocating in opposition to the two-tier education. Also, the ASB held their second, our second meeting yesterday, where we have discussed the situation with the shuttle bus. I understand that the district is reducing the shuttle service to the half. For many students, the shuttle is the only possible way to go from campus to campus. I understand that Long Beach Transit have a new line that connects both campuses, but we have students that struggle, struggle every day for different economic situations. And for many of them, it's impossible to buy transit passes, even though we offer discounts. Reducing the shuttle bus will make everything harder for students, and it will be harder for them to get to classes, classes that the students choose having in consideration the past shuttle schedule. Schedule, sorry. These changes, these changes are not just going to impact the economic situation of the students, but many of the students will have to drop to classes, drop out of classes. As we all agree, to increase the student's access, and I feel like the service of the shuttle will contribute to this success, is something that the students will have, like, something less to be worried on. I would like from this board to advocate for this service that the students really So yesterday, a group of students were actually petitioning in, on campus and in the shuttle, and they collected about 300 signatures, asking this board and the administration to please keep the shuttle, since it is a service that the students really, really need. So I have it here, if anyone wants to see it later. To conclude, I want to clarify something that I said during the last meeting regarding to the property Los Cayotes 3340. The signs are also material signs and not toxic waste signs. I'm sorry for that. It was a language misunderstanding. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a speaker that's going to be on the non-agenda item, also a student, regarding the shuttle, so, and the fact you brought it up, first week of classes. So President Oakley, just some clarification, some questions on that, because it has come up. So you address that.
Sure. Well, first of all, I'll go back and just remind the board that it was this board and this administration that created the shuttle service. I don't see any reason why the shuttle service would go away. I'm happy to speak to Student Trustee Donado, but I understand that this is an area of discussion between the district, working with the ASB. It's always been a partnership between the ASB and the district to maintain the shuttle. I fully expect that the shuttle will be maintained. There is an issue of how you pay for the shuttle, and I know that we're working with the ASB to ensure that that partnership continues. Ultimately, the board has to, and the administration, working with the students, have to consider the cost of parking and much of the cost of the shuttle that the district bears is paid for through parking, through the parking fund. Our parking is one of the least expensive in Southern California at a dollar a day. That's something that we're going to have to consider going forward if we want to raise more money to provide additional shuttle hours. But those are discussions that are ongoing, and although I appreciate the student trustee's concern, I think it's premature to make any comments about whether or not the shuttle is going to go away. Certainly, I have no intention of the shuttle going away, and I expect that the Vice President and Student Sports Services will continue, him and his team will continue to work with the ASB to ensure that we find ways to keep the shuttle moving forward. So I expect it to continue.
Yeah, I would agree on behalf of the board. No question?
Yeah, just a quickly comment. I know that the shuttle is not going to be discontinued. My understanding is that we are keeping one out of two that we had before. I have personally tried, using the shuttle service. At this point, for the past two days, we have had one shuttle. Students are traveling standing, and they, some of them don't fit in the shuttle even though they are standing, and they are missing classes, a lot of them.
though they are standing and they are missing classes, a lot of them. So it's definitely something that we should be working on and I'm really happy that you are willing to work with us and so we can keep communication on that.
Yes, no, let's keep communication open and certainly working with Vice President Gable and Vice President Peterson, I'm sure will continue to look at this, working with the ASB leadership and find a resolution.
Good. And we are talking about the shuttle that operates every half hour?
Yes, currently it's operating every half hour.
Half hour, through campuses. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I think trustee Donado had one more comment.
Yeah, it's not operating, at this point it's operating every hour, actually. I have taken, I personally today was waiting for the shuttle and it was...
Well, if somebody could clarify that because I just looked at the schedule before I came here and it was every half hour or so.
President Oakley, we, or President Calog, we have contracted with our same shuttle service that we used last year. There were changes on their end which caused problems yesterday and today that we have addressed. We are, we have been paying for service for our extended, which is every half hour between seven-thirty and ten-thirty in the morning. And then again, it runs to the hour during the middle of the day and then every half hour, three-thirty to four-thirty, five-thirty, and then we have one shuttle that runs till seven-thirty.
Thank you. Very good. And thank you for student trustee report. Board of trustees, comments, questions, members of the board. Chair recognizes trustee Aranga.
I just want to say that I'm looking forward to working this academic year with you and your leadership, trustee Calog. I think we had a great start on Friday with the College Day. The enthusiasm that was out there with all the staff was very high. Lunch was great and I think that we're looking forward to a good year this year. Certainly hoping that we will be able to work much more closely with our faculty and staff and our students, of course, to address all the concerns that may be coming forward within this next year so that we can address those quickly and expediently before they become major problems. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Thank you. You know, and I'd actually like to say that I think that our year really began with our retreat back in July when we talked about what our board goals would be for the upcoming year and what topics the board would like to discuss during the year. And in addition to reaffirming our goals and the things we want to carry on with in this next year, we talked about the need to focus on communications and branding and we've already seen from the report from Mark Taylor that there's a response to those issues. We want to talk about eBooks and what that means on campus, STEM strategies, science, technology, engineering and math, distance learning at Long Beach City College and how that program is going. And finally, morale of students and staff. And I think we're also have seen evidence that we're moving ahead and trying to address some of those concerns. Those are things that are important to the boards, the board of trustees and it's nice to see that the year's just beginning and we're working on some of these topics.
Very good. Chair recognizes trustee Clark.
Yeah, I'd like to thank our student trustee for bringing up items that are pertinent to our students. I think that's very helpful to us to get your viewpoint dealing with the students and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Very good.
One other thing that I wanted to mention because it's important that we not forget that we are beginning an accreditation cycle. And I know for a fact that the team that's been working on accreditation has been working hard this last six to nine months on that process and we're working on the self-report and there have been committees that have been meeting. We've talked about student learning outcomes and I know the faculty was going to talk about student learning outcomes on College Day and it's been the main concern that the accreditation group has had with us over the last twelve years or so. And so we are well along in terms of preparing for the accreditation cycle and it's just something that we all are a part of and it's obviously the most important thing we do because if we're not accredited, we're not teaching.
Very good. I would like to also thank everyone at the college that was involved with College Day last Friday, everyone that came out and helped to make the success. As trustee Otto did mention, the comments on behalf of the board, we're talking about communication, teamwork and the morale and building that. We all realize the difficulties we've gone through in the past years and so it's nice to hopefully be moving into a new direction. So College Day, I just appreciate everyone's effort on that. I tried to make my rounds on behalf of the board and, but I appreciate all the effort that everyone did. Same thing in regards to the first day of classes this week, Monday and today. I helped man one of the information tents, which means there's probably students still lost after the directions I gave them, but nonetheless, it was, again, that was volunteers, people here at the college, the president's ambassadors, they also did a great job as well. And so I just appreciate all the hard work that everybody did. And it looked like it was, everything was going very well today. There was, there's going to be some wait lists. Obviously, I looked at some classrooms and then the one item that with the construction going on on campus, especially over in the center of our campus in front of the auditorium, we're trying to move through that the best way possible. Unfortunately, that project got a little bit delayed and so it somewhat cuts the college in half if you're moving over to the library or to buildings P, things like that, so, but nonetheless, I appreciate everyone for College Day, first day of classes. And it was mentioned, the building, the student services building A, the dedication for that, good job on everyone, the dedication to opening up the student service center, the one-stop center. That was very popular as well, so... Oh, the no meeting? Is that what, President Oakley, you're talking to me about?
We just want to remind folks that we have to move the scheduled meeting at PCC in November to Liberal Arts Campus.
And that was on here as well. I don't have to make that in the form of a motion at all, it's just, I had it here, but thank you for reminding me because that is for the...
November twelfth.
November twelfth meeting. November twelfth meeting will be here at LAC, so thank you for that reminder. But, so thank you for a good start to all the people that were involved and, and working forward to, as was mentioned, about making this the best year possible, so, and to all the individuals. Also, next week, just so people do know, and it's because I probably have a preference for, I believe our women's volleyball season opens up for their first home game next week. Not to put additional pressure on them, but I, hopefully I tried to make those, but our athletic season is starting again and so I have great expectations for our football program. After last year, it's anything, it's all up after last year. But the women's volleyball program also is beginning next week. I believe Wednesday is their first game here on campus, so anyway, a lot of good things going on and so thank everyone for their efforts. No other, I'm sorry, no other trustees at this time? Then we'll move on. There's no future reports? I have none. So we'll move to the final item, which is public comment on non-agenda items. I have actually two speakers, as I mentioned. One will be a student talking, Stephanie is all I only have first name, about the, about the shuttle. Do you still need to come up and speak to that item or was it addressed already? Going once, going twice? If you want to, you can, you can come over if you want to make that statement to, just so, for the record, please. And then the speaker will be followed by Karen Roberts. Your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Stephanie DeShams and I'm a Long Beach City College student here. I took a bathroom break, so I really don't know what was discussed, so I'm sorry. I'm a little starstruck, by the way. Hi, President Oakley. I only see you guys in media, so anyways, I'm just here to talk about the bus shuttles and the issue that's going on currently. I created a petition and my goal was to get a few hundred signatures, but I actually accomplished to get three hundred plus signatures in less than two hours.
And the student trustee made note of that in her comments.
Okay, great. So maybe, well, I was going to talk about my experience. I personally never taken the bus shuttle before, but I decided before I even gathered petitions, petition signatures, I should maybe take a ride. And my experience was awful, just awful. It's hazardous, it was running late and I had to stand up there. I was standing and I was really terrified. So maybe we should, instead of taking a shuttle, maybe we should increase shuttles or, you know, yeah, increase shuttles and maybe increase the capacity. I think that if we get rid of these shuttles, a lot of students are going to drop their classes. Personally, I don't take the shuttle, but I wanted to start taking the shuttle to reduce my carbon footprint and that's probably not going to be possible if you guys get rid of it because I need to get to my classes on time. So please keep the shuttles and I know you guys have the, you know, the students' best interest at heart, so, you know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. As trustee, or as the trustees have indicated and President Oakley, that there's no intention to, to get rid of the shuttle service, but to work and do some more improvement. Karen Roberts. Karen, you know you have, you have a maximum of five minutes as all speakers do with this item.
Yes. I don't think I ever talk more than five minutes. Oh, maybe I can tonight. No, I'm kidding. Good evening. So I'm back for two more years, so you'll be seeing a lot of me. I did want to report on the part-time faculty orientation that we had. So this was negotiated as part of our contract. We held our orientation on Tuesday, August twentieth. So part-time faculty are paid for three hours of orientation. This was very well attended and there was very positive feedback, especially from the new part-time faculty. I think most of the comments I heard was they really felt part of the campus and I think it was really good for them to, to hear the presentation. So I want to thank Cindy Viscachill for pulling all of this together and Diane Bangs was part of this, Lark Zunich, Connie Sears, Rosio Becerra, and it was really great to see everybody come together and present to the part-time faculty. I have to say that Cindy Viscachill's presentation on her guidelines for assisting disabled students in the classroom was quite good and generated a lot of discussion. I've been teaching for about thirteen years and I learned a couple of new things, so that was, that was great. So this will be an annual thing and I think it can only get better from here. Certainly it will help us to not have part-time faculty just sort of wandering around on campus, wondering, you know, kind of where they're going, so that was good news. One thing I would like to bring up just to advocate for students. I'm sure, I know that PCC is under, you know, lots of construction at PCC campus right now, but honestly, the portables are, they're not good. They're, they're, I mean, they don't really even come up to standard. So my portable had not enough desks, no equipment, I mean, just nothing. And I, I don't think that's a good learning environment for the students. Maybe we could just put a little more effort into providing, you know, just a better environment for students over at that PCC campus. Because I know if I had to sit in one of those portables and learn in the state that they are, I would definitely feel like a second-class citizen and we really want to be here for the students. And it was difficult not to have any equipment and I certainly hope I will have equipment tomorrow, so I put in my request, but I also put in a request for a room change because that classroom is, it's going to be very difficult to teach in that classroom with the subject that I teach, art history. But at any rate, I just wanted to make that comment. I think our students at PCC deserve a little better. Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming out and you're not second-class citizens.
No, you're not. All right, thank you Karen. No other speakers at this time. There is no need for a second closed session, so without objection, the meeting of August twenty-seventh of the Long Beach Community College Board of Trustees is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Did you get all of me?